And welcome to beautiful downtown Grand Forks. This is Monday, April 4th, 2022, Job Development Authority. Welcome in roll call.
Weigel.
Here.
Docler.
Here.
Weber.
Here.
Mock.
Here.
Cavani.
Here.
Sandy.
Here.
Vean.
Here.
Mary Bochensky.
Here.
We have a call.
Thank you. Item two, JDA Accelerator, 2.1, Flex-Paced Loan Request for Northern Tier Seed.
Hello Chairperson Mock, members of the Authority. My name is Brandon Bonblock. I'm the Director of Business Development for the Grand Forks Region Economic Development Corporation, and I'm here to present the flex-paced presentation from Northern Tier Seed Company. They're located just outside of Thompson, North Dakota. They condition seed primarily. They condition approximately a million bushels of soybean and wheat seed for several companies throughout the U.S. annually. They're looking to update their current cleaner and produce a higher-quality product, adding a little more value, and make several building improvements, including insulation and steel to their existing warehouse and concrete throughout the remainder of the apron on their site. This total project is just over $806,000, and the flex-paced buydown would apply to a first aid bank loan of $800,000, buying the interest rate down from 4.25% to 1%. This loan request from the growth fund is then just under $107,000, or excuse me, $36,000, which would leverage $107,000 from the bank in North Dakota. The loan-to-value on the property is 43%, a very healthy number. It's guaranteed by personal guarantees and corporate guarantees from those owners, including Bill Weber, who is here with us today, representing the company, and also Beth Hughes with the company. They're here if there are any questions, as am I, but others would look for approval on the loan.
Thank you. Let's open the public hearing. Seeing no one, let's close the public hearing. Questions, comments?
Fantastic regional business. Bring us more deals like this one. I'll move approval.
We have a motion.
Second.
And a second. Further comments, questions? Seeing none, all those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Item 2.2, Tech Accelerator, authorize equipment purchase from High Point Networks.
Thank you, Ms. Mock. The item before you is request to authorize contracting with High Point Networks for $560,000, $560,046 and 20 cents. This is for technological fit-up of the Herald Building across the street. When this went to Growth Fund Committee a couple of weeks ago, we just had an estimate. The estimate turned out to be within $46, so very close. So the request before you tonight is to authorize extending that contract that the city has had with High Point through our IT department to add this work, which consists of about $119,000 for network and security and the balance for audiovisual equipment. Adam Johnson from our IT department hears if you have any questions about the specifics. And the remainder of your staff report just kind of walks through the overall budget for this project, both kind of the $3 million that has been talked about for quite some time and how that's broken out, as well as the attachment includes it in a sources and uses format that shows actual contracts that have been awarded, and some estimated future funding requests that will be coming back to this body. Specifically, we'll be expecting some relatively large change orders in probably in the next few weeks. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions, as is Mr. Johnson. Other than that, we're just looking for action to approve that contract amount.
Thank you. Let's open the public hearing. Seeing no one, we'll close the public hearing. Comments, questions? Motions? Motion for Mr. Weber and second for Mr. Sandy? Yes, Mr. Cavani.
Just had a question on the scope of the large change orders. If you could talk about what those are anticipated to be.
Well, we've got a couple in the works right now. Since we did come in well under budget, we have looked at not really changing the scope, but more or less adding back items that were either cut back or eliminated based on that original budget. So what we're looking at is including basically the second floor restrooms. We're going to be untouched. We're looking at putting new fixtures in those to match the first floor. Some upgrades to the HVAC system. That seems to be, from a property management point of view, that's where we always get complaints from our tenants, so we feel that that's a really good investment to make that HVAC system as strong and flexible as possible. We're looking at, some of you may recall, the original design for that, what is now the community room space, would be, originally, we had looked at accessing some kind of meeting or classrooms off to the side via overhead doors. Those were eliminated for budgetary purposes, and we're looking at adding those back, those kind of glass roll-up doors. And then I think the last kind of big-ticket item that was included was some additional acoustical upgrades for that community room space. The proposal requests have gone out to the contractors from JLG already, so we anticipate probably the April meeting of Growth Fund Committee will see actual dollar amounts related to those items.
No further questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Weber.
Two-word question. The clock. Can you tell me what's going on with the clock over there right now? It's telling lots of different times.
Oh, you know, the power's been off and on, so I'm sure that has affected it.
Okay, that's, all right.
We can straighten it out. I don't know how long it'll last, but the clock is not broken, it's just subject to power outage.
Very good. And once the power is back on, then we can set it straight. And if people are wondering, in the meantime, that's what's going on.
Correct.
Great answer. Thanks.
Anything further? With that, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item three, informational items. 3.1, Snack Shack Startup Loan Restructure Request Update.
Good evening, Chairwoman Mock, members of the Authority. You may recall, last time we were up here with this item, you approved this business's initial request for a deferral through June of this year, as well as a five-year re-ammortization or repayment plan, as opposed to the standard four for this program. That was subject to three conditions, those being proof of the new trailer being ordered, taking a blanket lien against the business's assets, which is now standard in the startup program, as well as quarterly updates. Just wanted to give you an update today on the status of those conditions being met. For the first one, the proof of trailer order, Mr. Holt, who is here, available for questions, should you have any, provided a diagram of the trailer that he's ordered or going to order from his manufacturer, as well as a partially completed sales quote. The sales quote was partially completed due to the manufacturer's inability to currently obtain the axles needed to put the trailer on. So without those axles and knowing that price, he wasn't comfortable putting together the full sales quote. But we do have the partially completed quote, as well as the diagram of what will be manufactured once those axles are obtained. For condition two, the blanket lien, Mr. Holt's attorney was reviewing the documents and continues to. I've yet to hear back with any questions or comments the attorney may have, but we do aim to get that security agreement for that blanket lien on business assets signed as soon as possible. Plan was to report an update on that tonight. Given we haven't signed that yet, I will plan to bring an update to the Growth Fund Committee in April to let them know the status of that at that time, at which point, you know, it will be back to the Growth Fund Committee. And then the third condition, quarterly updates, we think we can handle that with no issues. Obviously, I'll just come forward every three months or so, let this body and Growth Fund Committee know about the status of payments and the business and that sort of thing. Next one for that, we would be back here in June, which would be right before payments start, or set to restart. Beyond that, we'll continue to work with Mr. Holt on that security agreement, as well as getting that purchase order confirmation when that can be provided. So like I said, I'm available for any questions, as well as Mr. Holt. Like I said, this is mainly just for your information tonight.
Thank you. Comments or questions? Thank you. Motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Motion and second. All in favor?
Aye.
We're adjourned.
Welcome, everybody, to the Board of Equalization Meeting, Monday, April 4th. Get a roll call, please, Marine.
Weigel.
Here.
Docler.
Here.
Weber.
Here.
Mock.
Here.
Cavani.
Here.
Sandy.
Here.
And Vean.
Here.
We have a call.
Thank you. Looks like 1.2.
Duties of the Board of Equalization by the city attorney.
Yep. I'll just provide just a brief overview. All of you have sat as Board of Equalization before, but the purpose of this Board of Equalization is to correct errors that are, as far as valuation, and you can increase or decrease the value as it's reasonable and just to render the uniform taxation. It's expected that those that are filing complaints with respect to their valuation are going to have competing values. That is expected, but absent evidence, North Dakota, absent contrary evidence, North Dakota Supreme Court has concluded that there's a presumption the assessing officers have performed their duty to assess and arrive at the true and full value. It's the applicant that carries the burden of proof before the Equalization Board. This doesn't necessarily end the appeal. The applicant can appeal to the County Board of Equalization and to the State Board, but if they don't appeal to both the city and the county, they can't appear before the state. So just a brief summary as to what the role is of the Board of Equalization today.
Thank you, Mr. Gosstead. Go ahead and move on.
At 1.3, then, is comments by the city assessor.
Mr. Hodak, please.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the Board of Equalization. I'll try and make my comments brief. This year for 2022, we sent out 1,326 notices of increase. Any property that goes up by 10% or more gets a notice of increase. Compared to last year, we sent out 1,200, so that's a pretty typical number. Historically, I think it's actually a low number. I remember 5,000 and 6,000 years, 10 and 15 years ago. There's two basic reasons why a property value will go up. There's new growth and revaluation. New growth is things like annexation, changes in exempt status, new construction and reclassification. Those things, we would consider new growth. Revaluation is due to a market adjustment that we make at the end of the year, based on our analysis of the sales data, or from a reappraisal that takes place. We reappraise a certain number of residential and commercial properties every year. So those two changes would produce a revaluation change. Those are market changes. Our overall change in true and full value for 2022 was an increase of 4.69%. That change is due to both new growth and revaluation. 2.97 of that is due to new growth, and 1.72% of that number is due to revaluation. We run a sales ratio study every year, both on residential and commercial property. We compare our 2021 values to the 2021 sale to come up with our ratio, and we look at the median number in an array of ratios. We array the ratios from high to low, and we look at the median ratio. In the case of the residential property, it was 90.3%. Then we make our market adjustments for the year based on those sales, and we run that ratio again, comparing the 2021 sales to our proposed 2022 value. And that ratio, in the case of the residential property, was 94.3%. So we have a little, that's where that increase coming from. It's coming directly from the sales data. And it affects, in the case of residential, it affects most every property. Some will see, if, for example, you had a reappraisal in your neighborhood this summer, you may see a little higher increase than other neighborhoods or other properties. We do the same thing with commercial property, and that ratio went from 95.8% to 96.9%. There wasn't an overall change to the commercial property because our ratio was good. The only properties, the only commercial properties that saw revaluation increases were properties that actually had a reappraisal in this annual summer reappraisal. When you pencil out that change in true and full value, it equates to about an $11,000 increase in the mill. That's up from $5,700 last year, so that's a pretty significant, that's the highest, this is the highest increase in value we've had since 2017. It was just over 5% in that year, and since then, it's been running between 2 and 2.5. Is there any questions on any of that information?
Any questions for Mr. Hodak? No, nothing so far.
Okay. I would ask then that, I have two written appeals to present to the Board of Equalization, two, five parcels, two different appeals. One is for the Sears Building. That is sitting on two parcels. The building and the parking lot are on separate parcels. The other one is three parcels. I just received this one about a half an hour ago. Lithia Ford on three parcels. It's 2473, 2373, and 2273 South Columbia Road. I haven't talked to anybody on that or had an opportunity to review any of the information we sent. So those are the written appeals that I have. If you could take appeals now from the audience.
So 1.4, receive formal protests and reconvene as Board of Equalization.
Thank you. So this time, we'd open it up to anybody that had an appeal to the Board of Equalization. All right, seeing none, that period is closed. Mr. Hodak, we've got two. We've received them.
Yes, if we could just reconvene as the Board of Equalization on May 2nd, then I think that would give me ample time to review the information that I received on the written appeals.
All right, thank you, Mr. Hodak.
Thank you.
Any further comments?
Do you need a motion?
Need a motion to adjourn? Yes, please.
Move or adjourn.
Motion for Mr. Sandy, second. We have a second for Mr. Vean. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. All right, welcome, everybody, again. Grand Forks City Council Meeting, Monday, April 4th. Get a roll call, please, Marine.
Weigel.
Here.
Docler.
Here.
Weber.
Here.
Mock.
Here.
Cavani.
Here.
Sandy.
Here.
And Vean.
Here.
All present, we have a call.
Thank you. Item 1.2, Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item 1.3, Mayor's Announcements, just a couple of announcements. We had, I would call it a successful joint UND Student Senate City Council Meeting, where we got to hear directly from the Student Senate over at UND, and had a number of good topics that we discussed. Last weekend, you know, this is an event that I think has flown under the radar, but robotics competition that'll be here in the next couple of years as well, a big draw. I think there was 47 different teams, and our Grand Forks team was part of a group that finished second. Really a come-from-behind deal there, but it was pretty exciting, got my kids over there. A great event and a free event that you can go watch, so next year when that comes around, hopefully we can get it out more, and more people can attend that. That's all I got for Mayor's Announcements. Moving on to two awards, presentations, appointments, and proclamations. I'm going to ask council if we can move item 2.1 behind the proclamations. So there'd be a council.
I move to suspend the agenda and move 2.1 beyond the proclamations.
Thank you, Mr. Sandy. Do we have a second? Second for Mr. Weber. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously.
2.2, Proclamation, National Public Safety Telecommunications Week, April 10 through the 16th, 2022.
Thank you. We got Becky Alt in the crowd. Perfect. National Safety Telecommunications Week, April 10th to the 16th, whereas this week is a time to show our appreciation and recognize that our safety and well-being are often dependent on the commitment, steadfast devotion of public safety dispatchers, because emergencies can occur at any time that require police, fire, emergency medical services, and other critical services. And whereas when emergency occurs, the prompt response of law enforcement, firefighters, and medical personnel is critical to the protection and preservation of life and property, whereas the safety of our law enforcement, firefighters, medics, all responders is dependent upon the quality and accuracy of information obtained from the citizens who telephone the Grand Forks Public Safety Answering Point. Emergency responders rely on their knowledge and professionalism to make critical decisions, often obtaining information and quickly dispatching needed aid. Public safety dispatchers are a single vital link for our responders by monitoring their activities, by radio, providing them with information, ensuring their safety. Whereas each dispatcher has exhibited compassion, understanding professionalism during the performance of their job this past year, now therefore I, Brandon Bochensky, Mayor of Grand Forks, North Dakota, do hereby proclaim, April 10th to the 16th, 2022, to be National Public Safety Telecommunicators Week. I urge each individual in our community to take the time to be in recognition of the men and women of the Grand Forks Public Safety Answering Point, whose diligence and professionalism keep our city and citizens safe. Thank you.
2.3, Proclamation, National Public Health Week, April 4th through 10th.
All right, we got the proclamation filed. We have a speaker. Perfect. And some awards to hand out.
Hello, everyone, members of the Authority. Good afternoon. My name is Tyler Mantsky. I'm the communications specialist for Grand Forks Public Health, also a part of the Grand Forks Public Health 2022 National Public Health Week Committee. I'm here not only to let you know that there are other employees at Public Health besides Debbie Swanson and Michael Doolittle, but to share our plans with, to celebrate National Public Health Week and honor some of our Public Health Champion Award recipients today. During the first full week of April each year, the American Public Health Association, otherwise known as the APHA, brings together communities across the United States to observe National Public Health Week as a time to recognize the contributions of public health and highlight issues that are important to improving our nation's health. This year, the National Public Health Week is being celebrated today, April 4th through the 10th. The theme created this year is "Public Health is Where You Are." By recognizing public health, we celebrate the power of prevention, advocate for healthy and fair policies, share strategies for successful partnerships, and champion the role of a strong public health system. I would like to take a moment to thank Mayor Bochensky for proclaiming this week as National Public Health Week for the city of Grand Forks and to all the work that he's done, the city's council and the city leadership do to make Grand Forks a great place to live, learn, work, play, and stay. You will find a copy of the proclamation, as well as a schedule of public events hosted by Grants Our Public Health and the APHA, and your packet along with the logo, that has the logo on the front, and they will be attached to the online agenda of the meeting as well. This week, we've created some events and shared some of the APHA-sponsored events, which are all free and open to the public. Throughout the week, all are invited to participate in our hashtag #MentalHealthySelfie event, in which any selfie of a random act of mental well-being can be posted to the Grand Forks Public Health Facebook page with the hashtag #MentalHealthySelfie. There'd be a prize bundle given at the end of the week on Friday, 1:00 p.m. via Facebook Live. If you're interested in following along with that, it's @GFPublicHealth. This is a national challenge, but we're participating. It's called the Keep It Moving Challenge. There's still time to sign up if you're interested and contribute your activity. Their goal is to achieve 2 billion steps, either through actual steps synced from your fitness device or convert your other physical activity into steps via their online app. You can sign up for that at NPHW.org. Earlier today, we participated in a kickoff webinar at our department. As you can see in our agenda, there are many more webinar opportunities from the APHA throughout the week at no cost. Many are listed on the agenda, but if you visit NPHW.org, you can see them all. We also hosted a health and wellness drive for Grand Forks Head Start. Through generous donations from Spectra, Dakota Dental Foundation, Save Kids, Grand Forks Public Health, and the public, we have been able to fulfill their current identified needs of oral health kits, first aid kits, and items to promote physical activity for all 153 Grand Forks children involved. Spectra Dental has also kindly donated their time and expertise to present information on proper oral care to all students as well. A big thank you to everybody who's helped on that endeavor. More information on the events can be found at the Grand Forks Public Health Facebook page, once again, @GFPublicHealth. And lastly, Grand Forks Public Health sought nominations for Public Health Champions, and we're extremely excited, you can tell because I can't say it, to present these awards. Following any questions you might have regarding National Public Health Week. Any questions?
Any question for Mr. Mantsky? No.
Okay. So first, before we present the Public Health Champion Awards, I'd like to take a quick moment to honorably mention the nominees who received the Public Health Hero Recognition. If any of you are in the audience, would you please stand in place and be recognized when I read your name? Spectra Health for their dedication to providing services and unwavering support of best practices throughout the COVID-19 pandemic. Brad and Gail Offit, who are both retired but have tirelessly worked to impact the community by serving countless members at the Olaris Vaccine Events and over 5,000 people at the Grand City's Mall Vaccine Clinic. They recognized a need and devoted their time and talent and service to their community, only to be paid by our thanks and appreciation. Lindsay Dara of Joyful Tots Childcare participated in a farm-to-child care program that offered garden space to community members who wouldn't have an opportunity to grow fresh produce otherwise. Lindsay utilized this opportunity to provide her daycare with fresh, healthy, homegrown foods and exceptional learning opportunity for the kids. Next summer, Lindsay tripled her garden space and became a mentor to other providers looking to do the same. My Ally Health is recognized for their dedication to public health services, such as providing COVID testing, advocating for all vaccines, and being an application site for women's voice services. Logan Keatsman is an RN at the Grand Forks County Correctional Center. He provides excellent care to inmates and has brought relief to his grateful coworkers with his exceptional work ethic. And finally, on the honorable mentions, Anthony Saylor is an NDDOH nurse who really went above and beyond at the COVID-19 vaccination clinics in the Grand City's Mall. He found ways to improve processes and worked almost every single clinic from September through March. He took on new roles as a vaccine prep lead and filled in for site lead as well. And now, we'll move on to our Public Health Champion Awards. I would like to ask Mayor Brandon Bochensky to please come down to the floor and help us present these awards.
Thanks. Can we first give a round of applause to all those that you mentioned?
Thank you. So when I call your name, if you want, I'll just head up here, and then I'm also going to read your nomination. So the first award that we'd like to present today is going to go to Mara Ferguson, and I will now read her nomination as she comes up here. Mara Ferguson has displayed a strong commitment to the community of Grand Forks and the residents who live here for many years. During the past two years, Mara has served as administrator for the GFK Community Support COVID-19 Facebook page. This is a natural role for her as a licensed social worker and passionate community helper. Through her administrative role for the Facebook page, she worked to ensure that all information was posted, was well-vetted, and supported by public health signs. This site has been a popular place for residents to get accurate information on COVID-19 protections, be connected to services, and receive support. The site has grown to more than 8,700 followers since March 13th, 2020. Mara frequently contacted Grand Forks Public Health to gather content before posting information on testing and vaccination opportunities and other safety and support services. Mara's numerous other activities in the community support social justice, including fair housing as an employee of Fair Plains Housing. Her efforts to memorialize a victim of lynching in her recent support of hate crime ordinance. She bravely testified before city council on this issue and stood in solidarity with others representing the interests of marginalized groups. She has a passion for public health, social work, and helping others. Her passion comes from the heart and without any benefit to her personally. Please give your consideration to Mara as a public health champion. Mara was nominated by Debbie Swanson. Thank you very much, Mara. Our next awardee is Miranda Olson. Miranda had several nominations, so I'm going to read some excerpts of hers. Miranda Olson has also been, has been working hard as a full-time student to complete her bachelor's degree in public health through UND. She's a full-time firefighter and EMT for the city of Grand Forks. When not in school or on a shift, Miranda is doing more for the community. She has played a key role in being a voice for the COVID Campus Coalition, providing UND students with just facts about COVID-19 vaccinations to promote a healthy campus. Miranda took her passion and noticed a need in the community. She used her knowledge and passion in public health to bring a leave-behind program to the city of Grand Forks that's going to help prevent opioid deaths. Miranda's program has brought several departments and entities together, all in support, including Grand Forks Public Health Department, Altrue Hospital, Grand Forks Fire Department, city officials, and more. With the reporting software of the fire department, Miranda's program will be able to log data and provide measurable feedback. Miranda also promotes and champions public health as someone who is approachable, kind, and always willing to help others. We believe Miranda Olson deserves the Grand Forks Public Health Champion Award for her exceptional ambition, drive, and support of public health. Miranda was nominated by Joe Ahmet, Brandon LaRocque, and Gary Lawrence. Thank you very much.[1796.57] Thank you very much. Our next award goes to Hugo's Family Marketplace and is being accepted by Tori Angitt. Tori is the store director for Hugo's. If there's any other Hugo's representatives, they can come up as well. Hugo's Family Marketplace instituted a mask requirement and social distancing protocols for their stores earlier during the COVID-19 pandemic. This modeling and mitigation measures helped to prevent the transmission of the virus in their stores and protected frontline workers. Hugo's was a willing partner in hosting U N D students throughout public health research, hosting Grand Forks Public Health to administer the vaccines at the Thirty Second Avenue location, and home testing kit distribution. The support through all phases of COVID-19 response by leadership store managers, employees has been impactful and demonstrates how they've been champions for public health. While this is an example of their leadership during the past two years, Hugo's is a leader in promoting good nutrition for all residents through a variety of initiatives that improve the health of our residents. Thank you again. Next, I'd like to honor or weeks you would like to honor Mary Barrett. Mary received four nominations, and I'll read some excerpts from them as well. Grand Forks County Correctional Center Nurse Mary Barrett has been our jail nurse for many times, or many years, and has been extraordinarily great to the detainees incarcerated here as well as the correctional officers that work alongside her. Her work as COVID nurse through the pandemic has been exemplary, and we wouldn't have gotten through it as well as we did without her. She is retiring in April, and our facility will miss her greatly. She has a heart of gold and would help anyone in need, no matter where or when. Mary's a dedicated community partner who works tirelessly to promote the medical needs of individuals who are incarcerated at Grand Forks County Correctional Center. She's kind, caring, and compassionate. She will go out of her way to advocate for the individuals who are within her care. She is a great asset to our community and especially those who are the most vulnerable. Over the last two years, Mary has worked day in and day out to keep everyone at Grand Forest County Correctional Center safe. She sends us daily emails to keep everyone from administration to inmates up to date. She's available to answer questions day and night. Mary is in the building long before most arrive to work and long after most go home, and she's done an amazing job and deserves recognition and hard work and dedication she has showed. Mary Barrett went above and beyond as a nursing assistant staff, inmates, juvenile detainees, while in custody during the COVID-19 pandemic. At times of chaos, she answered calls around the clock, responding to our needs and kindness with expertise. She was instrumental to all of us, providing the guidance and direction we all needed when we needed her. We are so appreciative of her and grateful that she is our nurse. She was truly the resource we needed, and she responded like a professional she is. She is our hero and will always be remembered as that. Thank you, Mary. Congratulations on your upcoming retirement. All of our awardees were notified prior of their award today, except for our last one because we wanted to be a surprise. Apologies to Debbie Swanson, but we would like to provide you with the last award tonight. Here is your nomination from Teresa Knox. As a department head of Grand Forks Public Health, Debbie Swanson has worked to sustain the health department's mission of promoting healthy environments, preventing disease, building community resilience, and assuring access to health services. She does this with strategies anchored in public health best practices and a focus on what is in the best interests of all residents and not just some.
Let me know if you're ever available to read proclamations, too.
During the last two years of the pandemic response, Debbie has consistently performed her duties with integrity, advocating for the population's health, and promoting science-based mitigation strategies despite political ill will and public inconsistent acceptance
We can.
of public health efforts.
All right, two point four proclamation, National Library Week, April third through
Strong community relationships and collaboration is always important in public health and even more so during the last few years, and she has consistently excelled in community relationship
the ninth, two thousand twenty-two.
All right, thank you, National Library Week, April third through the ninth.
building and collaboration. She has been a role model of calm and consistent leadership, mentoring the next generation
Whereas today libraries are more about what they can do with and for their communities
of public health professionals.
and not just about what they have on their shelves.
Debbie Swanson is a true public health champion.
Whereas libraries have long served as trusted institutions, often at the heart of their
Thank you, Debbie Swanson.
cities, towns, schools, and academic campuses. And whereas libraries serve people of all ages, interests, backgrounds, providing the
Thank you again.
resources and space to engage in lifelong learning.
I know John wanted to get a group picture, if that's possible.
Whereas libraries offer equipment and professional staff to support and utilize technology programs
Could all the nominees please come up here real quick and take a group photo?
and services. And whereas America is celebrating National Library Week, April fifth, as National Library
Thank you again.
Workers' Day, and the immeasurable contributions made by library workers, April sixth, as National Outreach Day, showing library services are not limited to their physical location, and April seventh, as Take Action for Libraries Day, encouraging community sport for libraries. Now therefore, I Brandon Bochensky, Mayor of Grand Forks, North Dakota, do hereby proclaim April third to the ninth, two thousand twenty-two National Library Week, and in our city and urge all citizens to visit our libraries and explore all they have to offer. Thank you.
Two point five proclamation, Fair Housing Month, April twenty twenty-two.
All right, and we got Ms. Ferguson who's pulling dual duty. Do you want me to read the proclamation first, or would you like to? Okay. Fair Housing Month. Whereas one of the greatest freedoms enjoyed by Americans is the freedom to live in a home of one's choice. Whereas this promise was made, this promise made to us by the Fair Housing Act, which requires that all people treated equally in connection with the sale or rental of housing, regardless of race, color, national origin, sex, disability, familial status, and religion in North Dakota, receipt of public assistance, marital status, and age. Whereas this year marks the fifty-fourth anniversary of the Federal Fair Housing Act and the original legislation targeting the elimination of housing discrimination in America and promoting residential integration. Whereas April is designated Fair Housing Month since the adoption of fair housing legislation in April nineteen sixty-eight, and is the time each year when the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, High Plains Fair Housing Center, and other groups organize events and activities to focus attention on the issue of equal opportunity in housing. Whereas each resident of the city of Grand Forks is urged to support efforts to practice the principles of freedom, justice, and equality upon which this great nation was founded during the nationwide observance of Fair Housing Month. Therefore, I Brandon Bochensky, Mayor of Grand Forks, North Dakota, do hereby proclaim April twenty twenty, Fair Housing Month in our city and urge all citizens to honor and abide by the letter and spirit of the fair housing law. Ms. Ferguson, please.
Thank you very much. I promise this is all for me this evening. Unless you want more, I can arrange that, too. Mayor Bochensky, members of city council, thank you very much for your time and for proclaiming April Fair Housing Month in the city of Grand Forks. Each April, we celebrate the passage of the Fair Housing Act. The Fair Housing Act was passed just seven days after the assassination of Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., which was actually fifty-four years ago today, and it is one of his most important legacies. Dr. King advocated for the passage of the Fair Housing Act, noting that decades of discriminatory policies and practices led to deep segregation throughout the country. The Act became law fifty-four years ago on April eleventh, nineteen sixty-eight, and is important in the civil rights legacy of the United States of America. In order to honor this legacy, Congress designated April as Fair Housing Month. Federal law prohibits housing discrimination based on race, color, sex, including gender identity and sexual orientation, national origin, religion, presence of children in the household, and a physical or mental disability. North Dakota also offers additional ceiling protections in our state of age over forty, marital status, and receipt of public assistance. I've given you each a folder as well that has different brochures in it that talks about different protected classes as well. If you have any questions, my business card is in there. If you'd like to have any conversations, I'm welcome to that as well. Open and barrier-free housing contributes to expanded social and economic opportunity for individuals and families, providing a pathway to improved life outcomes and stronger communities for all. When fair housing laws are enforced, people have choices about where they live and aren't relegated to neighborhoods of concentrated poverty or limited in their community access. High Plains Fair Housing Center is a statewide organization that works to eliminate housing discrimination and to ensure equal housing opportunities. We assist people who believe that they have experienced discrimination while attempting to rent or purchase housing. We conduct investigation into potential housing discrimination, and we provide community education to promote fair housing. In the past year, we directly assisted over one hundred and ninety individuals and families that experienced discrimination and over eighty households facing evictions. We were able to temporarily expand our mission in two thousand twenty-one to address pandemic-related housing issues by assisting some tenants with legal representation in certain metro areas, including Grand Forks, and by helping clients access the Rent Help Program across the state. We processed more than double the calls to our intake line this last year compared to just two years ago. In two thousand nineteen, we received three hundred and thirty-six housing-related calls for the year. In two thousand twenty, we had five hundred and sixty-nine calls, and last year we handled seven hundred and sixty-six housing-related calls to the center. Since our first year of federal grant funding in two thousand sixteen, we have seen a steady increase in total calls to our intake line as more people learn about their fair housing rights in our organization. But the drastic increase from two thousand twenty to two thousand twenty-one echoes the increasing crisis many in North Dakota face in both accessing and keeping housing. Housing discrimination complaints to our center increased during the two years of the pandemic as well. In two thousand nineteen, we processed one hundred and eighty fair housing intakes for that year, and that rose slightly in two thousand twenty to just over two hundred. However, last year, those calls increased drastically to over three hundred and twenty. So despite the laws that are in place, despite the agencies entrusted with enforcement and the option for individuals to file lawsuits, discrimination in housing continues to take place. We hope you'll join us in many of the Fair Housing Month events we have planned this month, including an in-person and online event in downtown Fargo on Tuesday, April twelfth, at seven P M. You can register on our website or by sending us an email at info@highplainsfhc.org. And if you think, if you are someone you know thinks they are experiencing housing discrimination, you can call our intake line at seven zero one, two zero three, one zero seven seven, or you can fill out a form on our website at highplainsfhc.org. Fair housing is your right. Ensuring fair housing in North Dakota strengthens our communities and ensures equal access to our communities for us all. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Ferguson.
Two point six proclamation, National Donate Life Month for April twenty twenty-two.
All right, this is the last one. Just so everybody knows, this is kind of an unusual day. We don't normally have this many proclamations. I think the previous record was two. This one's special. I actually got to visit with Sally Jacobson. She asked me to come visit in her home with her and her husband. And I think this is National Donate Life Month. You know, on your driver's license, one of the biggest things you can do is be an organ donor there. She was in need of a liver and really had a really grim outlook and not much of a chance of survival. That was sixteen years ago, and I believe as of today, her liver is actually ninety-seven years old. So she got a liver from a much older person, but it's sustained her these past sixteen years, and she is still a firecracker. She made some of the best brownies slash cookies I've ever tasted in my life and maybe some tea. So she's still going strong, but this was a proclamation that was read sixteen years ago by former Mayor Michael Brown, and now we're reading it again sixteen years later, and she's still going. So I think that's pretty exciting. Each year, so proclamation Donate Life Month, April twenty twenty-two. Whereas each year, National Donate Life Month is observed during the month of April, and we join to recognize the altruism and humanitarianism of those who are inspired to give the gift of life to fellow human beings. And whereas this observance pays tribute to organ, eye, and tissue donors and their families, whose meaningful decisions not only improve the quality of life for recipients, but in many cases, save their lives. And whereas there are more than one hundred and twenty-one thousand men, women, and children who are currently on the national waiting list for an organ or transplant, including more than three thousand six hundred from our region, and there are tens of thousands more in need of bone, corneal, and other tissue transplants. And whereas on April twenty-third, two thousand six, Sally Jacobson received the gift of a liver that saved her life and enabled to rejoin her family, advocate for donation as ambassador for Life Source, and treat each day as a special gift. Whereas the donors of our living legacy, including Sally's granddaughter Nora, gave the ultimate gift, and we honor them and their families for this decision. Now therefore, I Brandon Bochensky, Mayor of Grand Forks, North Dakota, do hereby proclaim April twenty twenty-two National Donate Life Month in our city and urge all citizens to honor and abide by the letter. Thank you.
We'll go back to two point one, Fu Fang USA Project Due Diligence Update Overview Presentation from last Monday's attached, as long as attachments A through C.
Well, Mr. Phelan, you gotta handle a hard shift here, so from that to this. So please take it away, sir.
Lots of good with that was just discussed, so congratulations to everyone. This evening, we're going to give you, we gave you an update regarding the Fu Fang project and the adjacent properties last week, Monday, so I have some additional updates. And I'm going to be, after I provide an overview, I'm going to ask Mr. Brooks to come up here and provide a planning and zoning meeting update along with Mr. Gostad. And then finally, obviously, there's been a lot of discussions on the petitions, so I've asked Mr. Gostad and Ms. Storsted to give an update on that particular matter. We did have a follow-up meeting with some adjacent property owners. And when I say we, I'm going to say Mayor Bochensky, Council President Sandy, and myself, with some adjacent property owners over at the chamber, and had some further discussions. And you know, these discussions have been important because, as we know, as we go through planning and zoning, one of the important pieces of the annexation is what it's going to cost property owners from property taxes to special assessments. So we've been working hard and meeting individually with property owners and in meeting as groups. So I think later, you're going to have a conversation with Mr. Gostad and Mr. Brooks about, you know, whether you want to delegate the first review of the annexation with planning and zoning. But I think the important matter is only the city council can, you know, generally provide a consensus of how are you going to move forward with the special assessments. And so I think we've done a lot of that groundwork leading into the annexation discussion. As you recall, you know, when we start looking at the adjacent properties, you know, Council Member Bean, when he first got elected, if you recall, the strategic infrastructure growth areas that we opened up, many areas with first-in infrastructure. And so one of the thoughts we had is that we wanted property or land availability. And what Mr. Gostad, or Mr. Bean brought to the city of Grand Forks is let's try to put some first in the infrastructure. And we've done that over the last several years in many different areas, as you recall. And I really see the, this area that we're speaking of right now is really an offshoot of that and probably a betterment of what we've done in other areas. And so just want to highlight some of the areas that we have gotten infrastructure ready across our community. One, number one, was the Oscarville area, which was an infill area, similar to the Highway Eighty-One area. And then there was a project, a first-in project, the Red River Biorefinery that was a new build. And so we put in a lot of infrastructure out front, not only to serve the Red River Biorefinery, but also to serve that adjacent property owners. We opened up areas along Highway Two that serve Stephis Manufacturing. We opened up areas in and around where the water treatment plant, not only serve the water treatment plant, but also now serves Core Scientific. One additional area was the I Twenty-Nine South area, and that's where Iron Height is currently available. That was important for us not only to serve that first-in commercial industrial area, but also to set us up for that I Twenty-Nine interchange in and around Forty-seventh Avenue. So those are all the things that we've done over the last several years, and there was always a first-in in project. In addition, we also created the business park. And as you recall, we wanted the business park to become more of an office park, and really what it's become is more of a logistics center with all the, with ACME, with FedEx, with border states, and with pro-transport in that area really has been become more of a logistical park. And again, that was one more area that we opened up along the way. So when we've had discussions with the adjacent property owners, along with Fu Fang, obviously Fu Fang is a large project from Red River Biorefinery, and but there's also adjacent property owners. In this case, when we looked at Oscarville, Oscarville was already annexed, but it didn't have a lot of the infrastructure that I think it got annexed, I would think sometime in the nineteen eighties, sometime in that timeframe. It probably should have had infrastructure come in at that same time, but it didn't. And this summer, they're going to finish the phase two of the paving, and then all the infrastructure will be in, in that case. In this case, you have an area that's adjacent to Fu Fang that is not annexed, and we're attempting to serve not only the adjacent area, but obviously the Fu Fang project. What we've done along the way, we went over that spreadsheet last week with you, is that we have some unique opportunities and unique programs to serve the adjacent area and also the Fu Fang project. Number one is on the drinking water fire protection side, is that we have asked and have been preliminary approved to put in eight and sixteen-inch lines, not only to serve Fu Fang, but also the adjacent property owners, and get a sixty percent cost share from the state of North Dakota and the State Water Commission in the city of Grand Forks, as I've said, subject to your approval, would pick up the other forty percent. And likely, we take out a drinking water SRF loan, which would be a thirty-year loan, likely at a two percent interest rate. Number two, the other opportunity that we have that we haven't had in these other strategic infrastructure growth areas is to have a loan. In this case, when we looked at Oscarville, Oscarville was already annexed, but it didn't have a lot of the infrastructure that, I think it got annexed, I would think sometime in the 1980s, sometime in that timeframe. It probably should have had infrastructure come in at that same time, but it didn't. And this summer, they're going to finish the Phase 2 of the paving, and then all the infrastructure will be in, in that case. In this case, you have an area that's adjacent to Fu Fang that is not annexed, and we're attempting to serve not only the adjacent area, but obviously the Fu Fang project. What we've done along the way, we went over that spreadsheet last week with you, is that we have some unique opportunities and unique programs to serve the adjacent area and also the Fu Fang project. Number one is on the drinking water fire protection side, is that we have asked and have been preliminary approved to put in eight and 16-inch lines, not only to serve Fu Fang, but also the adjacent property owners, and get a 60% cost share from the state of North Dakota and the State Water Commission in the city of Grand Forks, as I've said, subject to your approval, would pick up the other 40%. And likely, we take out a drinking water SRF loan, which would be a 30-year loan, likely at a 2% interest rate. Number two, the other opportunity that we have that we haven't had in these other strategic infrastructure growth areas is to have a loan dismissal of the wastewater collection system. So as you recall, there was an infrastructure, federal infrastructure plan. The state of North Dakota both got water and wastewater funding. And so as part of the clean water SRF program, they can get rid of 49% of the loans that they create through the clean water SRF program. We think with this adjacent area that is on septic systems, it's in the state's environmental best interest, and also on the cost affordability to, for us to seek an opportunity for the state of North Dakota to not create those loans, but to get rid of those loans in that adjacent area. Wouldn't be for the Fu Fang or the greenfield development, but for those areas. So those are two unique things that we're going to do under this growth area that we didn't do under the other growth areas that are unique. It came down, and when we further discussed, as you recall that spreadsheet, there was some property owners that were still within that trunk infrastructure. It was called trunk infrastructure in the Highway 81 area, and we're planning to put a stormwater detention pond, and that storm pond is going to be paid for currently by Fu Fang in the city of Grand Forks. However, there were some trunk lines. And so what the mayor has proposed and Mr. Sandy concurred is that the city would pay for that trunk infrastructure. We would use our Paridog State Infrastructure Funds, as we talked about last week with the current prices of oil and the current production. Likely by the end of the year, if not early next, we're going to receive our full allotment of the $12 million, this current biennium. So we're going to dedicate 700, that, right now, we're estimating that stormwater trunk infrastructure is 787,500. The city would take that under our portfolio, and we would not special assess that portion. So that was one of the bigger talking points with those adjacent property owners. With the city just paying for that infrastructure, I talked a little bit about creating a TIF-like district. I think now really we're down to the 20% of 27th Avenue North paving and the associated stormwater infrastructure that has to go in with any street that gets put in, and then we're down to the flood protection special assessments. And so those are the two things we're really down to. So I think it's a better deal that the city just pays for the trunk infrastructure and does not create, go through a lot of bureaucratic things to create TIF districts and have us just pay for that trunk infrastructure. That's what we're recommending going into, not only the planning and zoning, but the city council. The other thing that we did here is 27th Avenue North, and that related stormwater infrastructure is really needed in that area for those businesses that are conducting that. And it is that fringe road. The other thing that we have found out is our Public Works Department, and specifically the Street Division, is maintaining North Washington or 81 currently all the way to the diversion ditch. And we are also helping to maintain 27th Avenue North. So I think now is the time to improve that road for the greater good, and I think we've reached enough of a capacity that we should just improve that road along the way. The other thing we heard at the meeting is that there's safety concerns along Highway 81 in North Washington with the existing truck traffic and future truck traffic that's going up there. Currently, Trans Systems is moving in where the former Andy's Harley is, and there's additional truck traffic. Mr. Bittner presented and provides you an overview that they are planning some turn lanes on some of those major thoroughfares, whether that's Gateway Drive, whether that's 42nd, or whether it's Highway 81 or North Washington. What the request is, is that the city of Grand Forks, and we've concurred in this work with the North Dakota DOT, to work with them on providing four lanes of traffic all the way to the diversion ditch, at the very least. And right now, it, the four lanes end in and around where Home of Economy is, and so it'd be extending it to the diversion. Obviously, that's going to take some time for us to work with the North Dakota DOT to do it. It is a state highway, and so we got to get in their programming, and so they can fund that. So in the meantime, there's going to be lanes placed in, but we're going to work further on adding some additional capacity. The other thing that was brought up was 30th and 33rd. Right now, we are not planning to pave those roads, but those are secondary roads that we were planning just as utility first response access points. And it might be, might be 30th, it might be 33rd, it might be an and. But we were just planning to get those roads up so that our first response and the utility workers could get in there. That would be a cost borne by the city in Fu Fang, because it's not meant for general traffic in that area. If at some point, property owners wanted to get those paved and get them upgraded, we would look at it at that point, but right now, we are not planning to do that in that Generally, that was the large discussion. With all that all being said, you know, really, what we're going to put in, we had that big spreadsheet with the dark line going down the middle on the left-hand side of the sheet is the city and the state. The right-hand side is what's going to get special assessed. We talked about on the special assessment side that it'd be a 30-year debt service payments on anything that we special assess. So rarely, at this point, it's at 20% on the street and storm, and the flood protection, we move out 30 years. And so on the city-state side, would be that $18.6 million. Special assessed would be $7.2 million. Of that $7.2 million, I think Fu Fang is at about $5.5 million. Of that $7.2, and of that $7.2, 2.8 is specifically related to flood specials itself. So that's kind of where we're at. And trying to move things forward, I think it was well-received, not among, not with everyone, but I think it's probably the best deal with city council concurrence that we've ever given in an area like this. And I think it has a really great opportunity. Whether or not Fu Fang comes or not, I think we do have a really terrific area that's going to be meant for agribusiness and is really going to grow. We certainly want to work with Fu Fang and get across the finish line on the project, but I think if not Fu Fang, there's really some other great opportunities for us to grow our agribusiness park with additional natural gas coming to Grand Forks. So with that, oh, one last thing, I'm sorry. The one last thing I also did is that, as you recall, there's rural water in that area. So I have given authorization to Agacy Rural Water to, as you recall, there was an rural line, that rural line that Agacy owned that went right down kind of dead center of that, of the property that Fu Fang is looking to reside in. So what I've had them go ahead with is bid a project, and I think it's going to be around $30,000, to move that line closer to where those Highway 81 businesses are, so it gets that water line out of the way. And so I've offered, authorized them to go ahead and get some bids, and then to work with Mr. Gostad when those bids come back, that we would enter into some sort of reimbursement agreement for Agacy Rural Water to move that line out of the way for future development, and then get everyone set up in the interim. And in the meantime, over the next two years, that longer-term water line would go in, but at least we'd get that water line out of the way in the meantime. With that, if there's any questions on that, otherwise, I'll turn it over to Mr. Brooks to go over planning and zoning of this week, and also have Mr. Gostad join in the conversation too.
All right. Any questions for Mr. Phelan while he's up there? Please, Mr. Bean.
Mr. Phelan, all this work that you did is really on those spreadsheets, right? The most recent one?
It is.
And do we, does everybody have access to that right now?
It is. It's online, and then we also give you the bigger sheet in front of you. So yeah, I'm kind of summarizing all those changes.
There's a couple of them. This one is dated what?
At least, I think it's dated today, or April 1st.
April 1st.
Yeah, April 1st, yeah. April 1st, and it's been an ongoing thing, but right now, the latest date is April 1st. That should be online. And again, it is a draft, it's a working thing. And eventually, it'll have to come back to city council for final approval, but we want to keep it going along the way, too.
Any further questions? All right, thank you, Mr. Phelan. Did you have something, Mr. Webber? No? Okay. Mr. Brooks.
Mayor Bochensky, members of the city council. Last Monday, I provided you updates of the approvals that would be coming before planning and zoning this week. It was rezoning, plating, vacation, and annexation. And in looking through state law and city code, it was discovered that annexation actually is to come before the governing body, which is city council. And so at this point, I have left it on our P&amp;Z agenda as info-only, would have to be referred to come to planning and zoning. With that, I don't have any other updates, but can certainly answer any questions that you may have.
Mr. Mayor? Yeah, Mr. Sandy.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Brooks. I appreciate that. I think we shouldn't forego 30 years of experience and practice, and so I therefore think we should refer this to the Planning and Zoning Commission for them to take action. So I would like to make that motion, but I would like to limit it to 30 days, because I don't want them to get together this week and then postpone it another month and then think about it. I'd like them to take action on it. So I'd make the motion that we refer it, and they complete their diligence within the next 30 days.
Okay, so the motion would be to amend the agenda. Let's call it Item 4.17, to refer the recommendation to the Planning and Zoning Commission with a time period of 30 days. Is that correct, Mr.?
That's my motion. Yes, sir.
Can we get a second? Got a second from Mr. Bean. Any further comment?
I have a question.
Yep, Ms. Mock, please.
Since it has been advertised as information only, is that, what does that mean to the public? Are they prepared to come speak to the item? Is that a reasonable?
Yeah, I'll defer to the city attorney, but I think it would have to be amended to put it on the agenda for action.
And is that enough time? Does that meet the requirements for notification?
They, yeah, well, you're only, the notification is to provide, is not necessarily with respect to the annexation itself. There's other procedural matters that would have to come back to the city council. There are notices that would have to be sent out to the landowners about the potential annexation. So with respect to the planning and zoning, what they would have to do is go through the same exercise this council is doing, is to amend its agenda to make it an action item. And again, if the, if the planning and zoning deems it necessary to defer for a week, they could conduct a special meeting, because there, as I understand it, there'd be a 30-day period of time to make a referral back or a recommendation back to the city council.
So I guess for clarity, they'd basically be up to that governing board or that board decide how they want to act, Mr. Gostad? Is that correct?
That's an accurate statement. I would think that they would amend their agenda when the city council has referred it back to the planning and zoning, to make a recommendation to the city council. Before, again, this is, would be before the city council would adopt a resolution. And once that resolution is adopted, then there are further notices that have to be sent out to the property owners, that it would be subject to the annexation.
All right, one further question. I believe we did change the, instead of needing a unanimous, I think it's a supermajority, is that to amend the agenda? Is that a five out of seven vote we need to amend the agenda?
I would like to say that would be the case. I just, we had talked about doing that, and we just had not gotten around to modifying the ordinance. So it does take a unanimous vote to modify the agenda, to consider that matter.
Okay. All right, we have a motion in a second. Further comment, Mr. Webber?
Yeah, comment. So this has been a lot of technical information, some bureaucraties here. I want to make sure that I understand it. I believe I do, but I'd also like to make some statements for the general public. And I'll start by saying, I am generally in support of this project moving forward. I have concerns. I've heard concerns from people. I think there are legitimate concerns, and that's what the development agreement is for, is to explore those concerns and to make sure that everything is going to be beneficial for the community. And so that's why I'm in support of the development agreement as well, so that we can explore those legitimate concerns. I think that the petition is somewhat separate from that, but that's the right of the people to put forward a petition, and if that petition is successful, and we'll be getting an update here in a moment, then that should go to a vote of the people. And that's absolutely right and proper, that it would do that. I suspect that it will fail. I think the majority of people in Grand Forks understand that this will be beneficial for our community, but that's yet to be seen. Now, what I believe has happened tonight is, in addition to the larger development proposal, there's this issue of annexation. And in fact, it's kind of my sense that really, the opposition to Fu Fang has always been at its base about annexation, but we'll see what happens there. And all along, as we've been discussing this, I've been saying, oh, and this will go to planning and zoning. And Mr. Maticek sits on planning and zoning, so this will be a recommendation that will come forward to city council. And then I've recently heard that we've explored the law a little more deeply, and that maybe it didn't have to go to planning and zoning, which felt a little bit to me like changing the size of the goal during the third period. Ours suddenly got smaller, and the other side got larger, if there's going to be an us and them. But I appreciate President Sandy's motion to make sure that the annexation is going to go forward to planning and zoning. That's the process we've followed, as he said, for the last 30 years. And if that needs correction, we should certainly explore that, but not at this time. So I plan on voting in favor of the motion, and it's my understanding that that's the background to the motion, and that was the intent of the motion. And that's all I have to say. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Webber. Any further comments? All right, seeing none, all those in favor of amending the agenda as stated by President Sandy in second, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. The motion carries unanimously. So we will create Item 4.17. Why don't we call it for the annexation recommend, refer the annexation to planning and zoning for a recommendation? And as we move that, we'll add the 30 days to it. President Sandy. All right, Mr. Brooks, please.
That's all I had for tonight, Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Phelan, what was next?
I asked Mr. Gostad to give us an update on the petition itself.
God, please, Mr. Gostad.
Yep, thank you. My office, along with Marine Storsted's city auditor office, has been working diligently in reviewing the petition. I want to say this, and I think I mentioned this last time, that this is a decision by the city auditor, by their Home Rule Charter. We will provide a memorandum of some of the issues that we've identified so far to assist her in making the decision as to whether what has been submitted is sufficient or insufficient. If it's deemed insufficient, there is a seven-day period of time in which corrections or amendments could be made. That does not include going out and seeking additional signatures. That only relates to initiated ordinances, and this is not an initiated ordinance. Another matter I want to also highlight for the council is that this document or the documents that were submitted were neither reviewed nor asked to be approved by my office or by the city auditor's office. It appeared at the city auditor's office on March 23rd of 2022, counting the 20-day period of time to review the sufficiency of it. If you use March 23rd as the starting date, that means the 20-day period would expire on April 11th. If you use the next day, that means it expires April 12th. Nonetheless, we've targeted a date in advance of the April 11th date, or by April 11th, to have that decision rendered. Couple of issues that I did, I just want to briefly touch on that we've looked at is there is law in North Dakota talking about matters that are referable, that differentiate between matters that are legislative in nature versus administrative matters that city councils can pass upon. Municipalities are a bit different than statewide or the North Dakota legislature. They pass laws. It's recognized that city municipalities can engage in more administrative decisions. And there is case law, and there is law to suggest that administrative decisions may not, are not referable, as opposed to legislative. Legislative matter is something that is permanent law or sets forth some sort of rule of conduct or course of conduct for guidance of citizens overall. Administrative decisions are more in the nature of to execute previous policies or enacted laws that are already in place. For example, annexation of territory was administrative and not referable. Tax exemption for property was administrative and not referable, and a rezoning in the law that we've discovered to date was administrative as opposed to legislative. Other issues that exist is the possibility that the petition is asking for multiple questions in a single ballot measure. questions in a single ballot measure that causes some concerns from our office, and we're exploring and reviewing that. The possibility that the documents may include what are deemed to be extraneous materials. If it's not a multiple question, then the possibility of extraneous materials may exist within the petitioning documents as well. And the issue with respect to... We look back and look back at the Arbor Park initiated measure. That was an initiated measure as opposed to a referral matter. But in that instance, that petition was reviewed, and there were changes made, as I understand, from what was originally presented versus what was circulated. And there are differences to what we... What has been received versus what was the petition that was put together for the Arbor Park. There are differences to what we've got to date. And so we're reviewing that as well because in the Arbor Park, there were requirements with respect to what needed to be within the signature pages that don't seem to appear in what has been presented today. And again, those are issues that we're reviewing. My expectation is that, when I'm... My expectation, what my office is planning on doing is submitting a memorandum to Ms. Dorsted to go through some of the issues that we've identified, a legal analysis of those issues, that then she could use that memorandum in making a decision on the sufficiency of the petition. It's one component of the sufficiency review that Ms. Dorsted will engage in. She's also looking at, as I understand, the signatures, whether people that have signed live within the city or qualified electors and those type of issues as well. And those are matters that are within the city auditor's office. I'm not... Our office is not engaged in that level of review. We're looking more at the more of the legal issues with respect to what's been presented. But that, I'd be happy to answer. Any questions you may have?
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Gosted? Mr. Weber, you look like you're ready for a question, please.
Sure, please, thanks. So if there were mistakes in the way the petition was put forward, that would result in your recommendation or the decision from the city auditor to not allow the petition? I don't know that I'm using the correct terminology there. It is not in the purview of the city council to override that. We don't get to decide whether this should move forward or not. This is outside of our hands. Is that correct?
It is, and I want to... One caveat is that I know there is a question posed about the city council referring this themselves. There is a Home Rule Charter provision that talks about referring of ordinances in seeking advisory vote, but that's before the ordinance is adopted. This is not an ordinance. Also, there'd be concerns about engaging in that and doing that when we've got a mandatory requirement. Somebody has invoked that initiation process, right? By filing those documents, that Home Rule Charter provision, section 14, it's Home Rule Charter, Article Four, section 14 says that those provisions in that referral are mandatory, which I read to mean we've... Somebody's invoked that, and so we have a mandatory obligation to go through that process at this point. There would, I suppose, be the possibility of the city council, because one of the matters with respect to suspension is the suspension would end if the city council would repeal the ordinance or resolution, which would mean you'd have to go through a reconsideration of the approval of the development agreement, which I would not recommend for the reason that you'd be overriding a Home Rule Charter that is mandatory in and of itself. And there may be issues with respect to whether what has been presented is even referable. I hope I... It was a little long-winded, but I hope I answered.
No, that helps. The decision about the petition is not in the city council's hands.
Correct.
Thanks.
Any further comments from... Questions for council, Mr. President Sandy?
I think it also is important to point out that at this point, we have no way... Our body has no way of referring this to a general public vote. Legally, we have no avenue to do so.
Ms. Dorsted, did you have comments?
I think maybe just to follow Mr. Gosted's comments, I can go through the process that finance has been going through with regards to petitions, and then we can open up for more questions. But as Mr. Gosted stated, we did receive petitions in our office on March 23rd. We have 20 days to review. As Mr. Gosted stated, we need to give determination as to sufficiency of those petitions within that 20-day period, and we will communicate those results with the petition commissioners that are listed, the three commissioners that are listed on that petition form. Our staff has been working very hard to go through all these signatures. We're still in the process of reviewing those. When verifying, we look at verifying the signer is in fact an electorate of the city. So basically, that just means if you can vote in a city of Grand Forks election, you can sign the petition. You need to live or reside at the address within city limits, and you must be at least 18 years of age in order to sign that petition. Those that circulate the petitions must also meet those requirements. You cannot use your place of business. You must list the address where you reside. We also look for things such as duplication, as some may have signed more than one petition. A complete address must be provided, and we need to be able to read that name and address that's provided in order to verify. 3,617 verified signatures are needed, which is based on 15% of the city voters in the 2020 governor's election. So basically, just to summarize, we're still in the process of that review. We will wrap this up within those 20 days, as Mr. Gosted has stated, and will submit our determination sufficiency once we are through our process, as well as the memo of recommendation from Mr. Gosted's office.
So I think the big question probably from Mr. Gosted and Ms. Dorsted, whoever wants to answer, when do we expect to have the answer that we're looking for here?
We had targeted April 11th. I spent most of the weekend working and reviewing the matter, and my partner has also spent a tremendous amount of time reviewing the matter. So I'm hopeful to have something to Ms. Dorsted within the next day or two, so she can consider it. I can't answer when she'd wrap up her work, but if possible, it would be really nice to get it done by week's end.
And just to be clear, if you do not complete the task by April 12th, is that the date? Then it would be deemed sufficient automatically? Is that correct?
If we do not... If there's no response as to whether it's insufficient within that 20-day time period, what has been submitted will be deemed to be sufficient.
Okay. Any further questions for Mr. Gosted or Ms. Dorsted? Mr. Veen, please.
Yeah, maybe... I don't know how this exactly aligns, but the development agreement, we had identified a number of studies that were and are underway. Are they still underway at this point in time?
As I understand, the third parties have suspended their work on the matter.
So I know that was one of the things I wanted to do, is get some answers that would be identified in the studies. So right now, there's no way we will be able to get those answers. Is that right? They won't be able to continue the study, I guess, that would hopefully identify.
Until the criteria for the termination of the suspension occurs, one of which is if the petition documents are deemed to be insufficient and they're not corrected within that 7-day period of time. Another one is the withdrawal of the petition. Third is if this council, and I think I just spoke about it, would repeal or basically reconsider the development agreement, or there's actual in the election. Those would be the four criteria to stop that suspension from continuing.
Is there the ability to have an advisory vote that the city council could initiate?
And that's what I was just speaking about, is I've got some... We've got parties that have invoked the Home Rule Charter with respect to the initiation or, excuse me, referral of a matter. And the provisions of that Home Rule Charter provision say they are mandatory. And so as I read that provision, we must complete the task of this 20-day review and make a determination on it. And so generally, the law, and I've researched this as well, is that city council can refer things for advisory votes at any time. But the problem is, we're rubbing up against a Home Rule Charter, a charter that was adopted by the electorate in the city that put in these mandatory processes to be completed. So by sending out for an advisory vote, you would have short-circuited that mandatory Home Rule Charter provision.
And the studies... Mr. Gosted, the studies have been suspended because of the referral, the public-initiated request for the vote, correct? The minute we received those signatures, we stopped all activities related to the studies and Fu Feng because we legally had to.
As I understand the... And this was really a decision by A2S and Black and Beach, because those... They were the parties that were conducting those studies, and I don't think they wanted to run the risk of continuing that with the knowledge that they may not get paid or may not get compensated for the work because it would be under a potential suspension. So as I understand, both of those parties that were conducting those, that type of review, have suspended their work.
Would that be anything related to the development agreement?
Excuse me?
Would that be anything related to development agreement? Because now we've got an annexation, would that need to be delayed?
The annexation can go forward because whether I have the development agreement or not, the city can move forward with annexation of property by resolution. Obviously, the... One of the conditions in the development agreement is that property has to be annexed, plotted, and so forth, and rezoned. But that's a condition for the development of that particular project. It's not the inverse. The annexation is not dependent upon the development agreement being in place, but the development agreement and that condition is a requirement for going forward with the development itself.
Press for Ms. Buck.
So from what you... So the referendum is on the development agreement because that was the decision made by the council. Is it possible to seek an advisory vote on a related but different item? Since I think whether the petitions or signatures would be found to be sufficient or not, I think we had a significant portion of people signing because they would like to participate in a vote. So could we send a question to the public that was generally supportive of the project but not just referring to the development agreement?
Not sure how to answer that question because the documents that were submitted are twofold. Part of it talks about the development agreement, and then part of it also talks about the development agreement and all the task orders that were approved through the same motion on February 22nd. And so I'm not exactly sure what type of vote you'd be...
Well, do we have... You said because we've got the referendum in place, we can't just send the development agreement for an advisory vote because Home Rule Charter is now taking precedent over that decision. Do we have the option to ask the public for their support of the plant, of the development? We could frame the question differently, I guess. Is that an option or is that too close to the subject at hand?
It's hard to answer that question. I don't know how to... What exactly would be phrased as far as what a vote would look like when the petition documents that were submitted make reference to the development agreement, associated exhibits, escrow agreement, and then also make reference to all the task order agreements as well that are all related to the development of the Fu Feng project? So I'm not sure you could slice that one that thin where it wouldn't still touch on What is being asked to be referred, or at least, to be candid with you, it's the petition document isn't exactly clear, given the fact that there are, you know, references to both the development agreement and then the development agreement and the task orders, all in one document. And so it's hard to... It's hard to answer the question and be able to slice it that finely for an advisory vote without touching upon the very process that is mandatory, that has been invoked by the parties at this point.
Any further questions for Mr. Gosted? All right, Mr. Phelan, did you have anything else on item 2.1?
I think we're ready to proceed, Mayor.
All right. We've got a three public hearings and second reading of ordinances.
Okay, 3.1, public hearing and determination of protests for project number 8411, District 762 Belmont Road reconstruction from 47th Avenue South to Rivers Edge Drive. We have received no protests on this project.
Thank you. And I know Mr. Grasser has an update, and he's worked with Mr. Kavami quite extensively on this, but I probably would put that update down on 4.7 on the action item unless the conversation goes that way. So for now, I'd open up the public hearing first on item 3.1. Anybody here to speak on item 3.1? All right, that public hearing period is closed, and I'd open it up to council for comment or motions. Got a motion from President Sandy, second from Mr. Veen. Any further comment? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. All right, so on action items, there's an update on items, so we pull item 4.7 and then obviously item 4.17. Any other items that council wishes pulled for discussion?
I'll move approval of the...
Okay, let me list them off then.
Yeah, okay, great.
We're going to do, let's see, 4.3 is introduction of an ordinance, so we'll pull that one out separately. But for now, we would look for item 4.1, item 4.2, 4.4, 4.5, 4.6, 4.8, 4.9, 4.10, 4.11, 4.12, 4.13, 4.14, 4.15, and 4.16. So looking for a motion to approve those items. Got a motion from Mr. Weber. Do we have a second? Second from Mr. Kavami. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Those motions are carried unanimously.
Then 4.7 is the bid award for project 8411, District 762 Belmont Road, reconstruct 47th to Rivers Edge Drive.
Thank you, Mr. Grasser, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the city council, again, just a reminder, the item before you is the award of the bid for the Belmont Road. We refer to it as Phase Three. If you remember, we've done two other previous projects. The low bidder on here is Stratocentra Contracting. It's about 7% below engineer's estimate. And maybe just to remind, I think what initiates some of these discussions, if you remember, in the beginning of a project, we do an engineer's estimate on a project. And then notifications go out to the property owners as part of the special assessment notifications. So in simplistic form, they take our engineer's estimate, which has some contingencies in it already for some change orders and whatnot. The notification gives an uprange of plus 25% on that number and I think minus 10% on that number. So usually, the communications we get is they're looking at the... People are looking at the very highest number in there, which is the highest range, which is appropriate because it is possible to hit. But in most cases, that number does come down based on the bid. So then what happens is we go through the process. We have the... Go through the advertising and we go through the bid. And then, once the bids are received, which we have here, a second notification would go out based on the engineer's estimate, based on the bids received. That number goes out, has a tighter range. It's, I think it's plus 10%, minus 5%. And so we start to tighten that band because we have fewer unknowns out there for the property owners to deal with. That's some of the basic processes which just, I think, enter into this, into the... I think some of the initial contact came when we had that very first notification, when we had the plus 25%. Those are always big scary numbers. You compare that, you talk to somebody else whose project is already complete and those numbers are certified, they're based on actual numbers that were incorporated into the project, which is usually a lot different than what we're dealing with when we're doing the speculative early estimating. we're doing the speculative, early estimating. As was noted here, a couple, the meeting before, there is, there is some concern, worked with Councilman Kavami on, on some of the Belmont Road, the questions that have come up on Belmont Road. Again, it was done in three phases, if you remember. And by the way, there should be a memo on each of your desks, paper copy of, of my memo and some of the assessment district maps, if you want to refer to them. So Phase 1 was started at the south end on 62nd Avenue South, pretty large district because it encompassed, as you go east, it goes, incorporates areas out towards the river. So you had a pretty large project, relatively simple project, there weren't a lot of frontages and things like that on the project. Phase 2 was the next piece going north, and Phase 3 was, was the last phase, again, that we're talking about essentially today. Quick summary of the memo. Phase 1, we're trying to normalize the conversation between things that move differently amongst the phases. So remember, each phase had a, had a paving component, and it had a storm sewer component. So what we're doing is just combining the paving and storm sewer together, so we're kind of as close as we can comparing apples to apples. So Phase 1, if you're looking at, the cost there is generally about 19 cents a square foot, once you do the paving and the storm sewer. Phase 2, if you remember right, again, that was during the COVID, we actually removed that project from, from our list of projects. And then when things didn't look quite so dire, we were able to slip it in, and, and we were able to do the work ourselves internally with engineering, and we were able to get that project bid. Got really good bids. And it was, again, a very large district. The cost assessments on that one are about 8 cents a square foot, so they're substantially less. Phase 3, when we, we tried to normalize, what we did is we took out all the contingencies and all those extra add-ons that we sometimes add as protection. You bring that down to the actual bid price now with the bids received. The costs on Phase 3 would be about 24 cents a square foot. And again, it was noted, the special assessment district on Phase 3 was smaller than the other two. So some of the things, we looked at a couple of different alternatives, and the one item that we, we have, have looked at, I think that probably has, has the most promise to it, per the memo, is if you look at Phase 3 Special Assessment District, you'll see that there's some lots, very, very deep lots. When a special assessment commission looks at those lots, especially those that are down in the floodway, you can't do anything with them. So they don't provide full special assessments to the depth of the lot. They basically provide the assessments to about the, the front 140, which is, kind of normalizes the depth of lot issue, okay? So I'm suggesting, they didn't do anything wrong by not assessing the back end of the lot. That's pretty typical. Again, your property owner can't really do anything back there because of flood, in this case, floodway issues. But if we wanted to, we did look at, if we took that area and, and looked at the assessment district, included those, that square footage down there into the benefiting area, and had the, and looked at the city picking up that particular cost, that cost would be about $86,000. It would reduce the special assessments then on the remainder of, of that district to about 20 cents a square foot, which gets it very, very close to the 19 cents that we had in Phase 1. With that, if you were able to follow all that, I'll try to answer any questions that there may be.
Thank you, Mr. Grasser. Mr. Cramby, any comments?
Thank you, Mr. Grasser. So yeah, I received a few different calls or emails regarding the assessments and the differences, and specifically looking at the estimate, which you guys do when it's in the estimate phase. And it was at 37 cents a foot compared to the neighboring districts, or neighboring phase at 8 cents a foot. So there was just some disparity that caused folks to kind of get alarmed and reach out. And I think when we worked through it, and I think we came up with a viable alternative, another thing that really surprised me and, and made me a little bit more aware was that its Phase 2 was just really good bids. If you look at Phase 1 at 19 cents, you know, based on the, the understanding of adjusting for size, because the different phases, the landmass was just so different. Adjusting for, if Phase 3 is now at 20 cents, the 19 from Phase 1 to 20 to Phase 2 seems very level to me. And then Phase, or, sorry, to Phase 3, Phase 2 being 8 cents, it's just because, you know, we were very fortunate and got great bids, and it's, it was just a, you know, it was a good time to bid. So I really appreciate the effort at looking at this and understanding this, and finding a way to kind of normalize a multi-phase, multi-year project that has very similar benefits to our citizens.
Thank you, Mr. Kavami, and I think we can all appreciate your engagement on this. You've got a good result, so thank you for that. Any further questions from Mr. Grasser on the item? Mr. Sandy?
Just for the sake of the future, Mr. Grasser, are there a lot of areas in town that have similar, I mean, it's all north and south along the river, but has significant parcels of land that aren't usable, correct?
That's the main, yeah, the, the main thing is, is along the river has the floodway issues.
What I would like to see is, at some point, and I, I'm, I'm all for, I believe that we've found a solution to today's problem, but I'm worried about trying to find a solution for tomorrow's problem. And so perhaps we should have an actual discussion about the areas of town where this same sort of action may apply, so that we can make a policy so that the Special Assessment Commission can apply that policy in the future, rather than them doing what they normally do, coming back to us, people getting lots of phone calls, us having to call you, we having site meetings and special meetings, and then getting together for more meetings, and then asking you to come up and try to figure out some way to make this work out. So if we could, if you could bring us a recommendation or try to get that on the agenda for some time in the future, I think it would do us all some good. Thank you.
Thank you, President Sandy. Further comments or motions? Got a motion approved from Mr. Veen, a second from Mr. Kavami. Any further comment?
I would just like to clarify what the motion is then, if it.
Yeah, please.
The motion would, because I was just going to award, I think before I was going to award the fifth to the city.
For the city to assume the special assessments for the noted districts in the amount of $86,000.
And to award the bid, okay. Is that the correct motion, Mr. Veen, that you intended?
Yeah.
Okay. Got a motion and a second. Got that recorded? Okay, thank you. Further comment? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Grasser.
And then the item, 4.17, refer annexation to PNC for recommendation.
All right, thank you. I would just, this, this did prove unanimously, now we'd only need a fourth revote to be referred, so I'm open for comment or a motion. Motion to approve from President Sandy, a second from Mr. Veen.
Can I ask one question before? Did the motion require 30-day action by PNC?
Let's, let's just, you want to restate the motion, President Sandy?
I'd like the planning and zoning commission to take action on the Foo-Fung annexation within 30 days.
All right, is that the second you'd wish to second, resecond that? Mr. Weber, just so I have that.
Yes, please.
All right. Any further comment on the item?
Just, just one question. Is 30 days the typical, is, is that enough time? And what does that date end up being? And when does it start, or how is this going to be addressed?
Thank you, Mayor Bochinski, Councilman Veen. Last Monday, I was gonna put it on the agenda this week, so I think we, yeah, we can follow through with that. It would, provided that they'll add it to the agenda as an action item, but we could put it on this Wednesday and bring it back before you, by your next city council meeting with the rezoning and replating as well.
And that, that one hearing is the typical length of process that we have usually used over the last 30-plus years?
When, what we've done is, it's not a public hearing, it's a public comment. So that, a public hearing means something different, so our chair has always allowed public comment on, on items, so I would imagine that it'll continue to do that. So our four items that are in front of planning commissioner, just like your items, are action items. The public hearings are the three items that would, the, the public hearing will still be at city council.
And normally, that only comes once to the planning.
That's correct, correct.
So this is exactly the same?
That's correct.
It would come once, it's gonna come this next meeting this week?
Correct.
Yes.
Yep.
Yeah, Mr. Weber.
And then it would come back to us on the 18th, and then we have to vote on it again a second time after that? Is that correct?
Yes, you guys, I'll, I'll defer to the city attorney on that, but I believe that comes twice.
Yeah, what'll happen is, just to answer the question with respect to the 30 days, it's consistent with what is given to planning and zoning with respect to plats. And then, as far as the recommendation would come back to city council, and I would envision the council then would adopt a resolution, and that would then trigger the notices to the landowners that would be subject to the annexation for the subsequent hearing, that they could, they could come and, because really, it's the city council, it's this governing body that will make the decision on the resolution.
Any further comment? All right, hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries unanimously. That's it for action items, there's no information items tonight, so move on to six citizen comments. I want to thank everybody who waited around patiently to speak tonight. We've got several. Start with Mr. Bouclaire, please. Take the mic, sir.
Good evening, council. Thank you, Mayor. First, I want to thank you kindly. You've been very gracious for somebody who's not only out of town, but out of state, and I realize I'm on the other side of this issue a lot, so just want to say thank you. Also, I owe you guys two apologies. Once, I said you scared me. That was inappropriate. I meant some of your due diligence, some of your reasoning, some of your understanding. It wasn't meant to be personal, it was a specific item. So please, accept my apologies. Second thing, I want to apologize for my tone and tenor. I realize I might have offended some people, but I didn't want to offend anyone. Some of us, if I can, I think I can understand some of the people in the back, when it comes to China, it's not the Chinese people, it's the Chinese Communist Party. They're roughly 10% of the population, and it's our action towards the people that we find so offensive. Some of us are very emotional, because we have family members, right? We have people that have adopted children from China. Some of us have Christian members in our family, that are priests, right, who served in the religious order as a nun. Their family members of ours, that is our extended family, they've disappeared there. So that, that is not appropriate for the tone and tenor, but hopefully you can understand some of us on that issue. Anyway, I also want to say, I've received a number of comments, people feel intimidated coming here, not necessarily here, but fear repercussions. And I want to say, Mr. Bochinski has been very gracious, we've emailed back and forth. I can't express enough, even though we're on the opposite side of this issue, we're not fully aligned on some things, do not fear. You know, he's very gracious, you guys have been very gracious. So that's good, those are the good things. I, I'd like you to keep, right, an open mind, right, new information, new facts, we reach new conclusions, new dealings. And I'd like to speak to the Chinese Communist Party as it relates to Russia, because I think we all fear, right, what's happening on Russia-Ukraine is terribly offensive. This is incredible amount of due diligence, that's another level up when you look at it from national level. Some of you probably aren't aware, right, of the relationship between Russia and the Chinese Communist Party. And again, I will email you documents to support what I'm sharing, right? So, do you know who, right, Xi Jinping's best friend is? It's Mr. Putin, right? The first trip he made when he was president was with Mr. Putin. They had over 28, right, interactions together. One of the comments, right, one of the comments I want to read here, let me get my notes here with me, is essentially, their friendship knows no bounds, their friendship knows no bounds. And if you look at it at a national level right now, there's two, you have the National Economic Advisor, a guy by the name of Brian Dees, the National Security Advisor, Jake Sullivan, they're extremely, extremely busy, right? They've been pushing China back, right, China back from helping Russia. I think I see some heads nodding. Why does it relate to this project? Right, for all those of us who own businesses, you know, we do taxes quarterly, right? So your activity here, right, you're helping Chinese Communist company controlled from China be more successful in the community, right? This is rough math, it's not cap accounting. Say a $700 million investment, 60% equity, 420 million, right, what's wrong with 400 million? Right, 10% return on that is $40 million of profits. Where does the profit go? They pay taxes in U.S., right, the rest gets where? Recipped, paid back to where? It's obviously China, right? It's rhetorical question, Mr. Weber, right? Back to China. So just like, right, our taxes get paid here, they support what? The government before us. So there's some of us, it's as clear as my head is bald, that when you're helping the Chinese company succeed here, you're supporting the Chinese Communist Party and their value system, right? We all share the same laws, we don't share the same value system, right? For a lot of us, that's, it's amazing we're having this conversation. That's one of our known enemies, is Chinese Communist Party and their value system. And I think of a lot of, that's, that's one of the things I struggle with, right? How is this relevant to the lesser people in the community? Do you realize what happened back in September of 2021? Chinese Communist Party stopped fasting, right? I'm a farmer. That's one of the necessary, right, fertilizer ingredients we import into this country. Russia stopped nitrogen, that's something else we import into this country. Brian Dees, right, I'll send this to you, global food inflation, it's not gonna affect us here, we'll have higher prices. It's the poorest people in the world that this hurts, right? So can you help me understand? This is something, I understand about agriculture, trade. I wish, you know, Mr. Veen, Councilmember Mock, anything engineer-related, man, you guys nail it, off the charts, your due diligence, fantastic. When I see these other issues, I wish there was somebody that had the understanding, that took the time to dig into there. So another issue that concerned me is the pipeline, the optics of the pipeline. Mr. Veen, you asked last time about the pipeline, right? It comes from Winnipeg, it's all Canadian gas, right, you're moving in, you're not, you're essentially doubling down, bringing the pipeline over, right? So I'm going, there's supposed $10 million grant, right? Where does the fund come from? It's basically the COVID funds, right? So you have an issue in China, our government ended up printing a whole bunch of money, now you're taking that money to subsidize a pipeline to bring in Canadian gas. I'm thinking when they initiated the funds, they were helping, right, American companies do better, not Canadian, not the, not the Chinese, right? So there's some bigger issues beyond here. And, and again, I'll wrap it up here, I think you get the picture, right? There's a bigger issue. I, I believe the following, there's people at the federal level that are probably looking forward to stopping this project because of those issues, right? I think we all wish it was an American company, we wouldn't have any of these issues, you wouldn't have people like me coming before this company, excuse me, council, right? Quick question, this is not a rhetorical question, it's Mr. Weber, Mr. Sandy. Scale of 1 to 10, right, a 10 being, we'll call it the Ralph Ingolstadt Arena, best thing that ever happened to this community? Mandatory COVID vaccines, right, that's a zero, if they ever did that, right? Where do you think this project lies, right, on that scale, 1 to 10? And if there was a vote today, what percent of the community do you think would be behind it? Mr. Weber, it's not a rhetorical question.
Thank you, Mr. Bouclaire, do you have any other comments?
Final comment on the federal level, I hope you're serious to consider this. National Security Advisor, this guy by the name of Jake Sullivan, National Economic Advisor is Mr. Dees. If I was able to get them this following one sentence, and them to respond to it, If I was able to get them this following one sentence, and them to respond to it, and it's as simple as this, Fu Fang and related entities owning or operating any ag processing or production asset in the United States is not in the best interest of the United States, and those two would sign it, right, there's probably less than a 1/10th, 1% chance, would you vote the project down? The National Security Advisor and the National Economic person said this project is not in the best interest of the United States. I got the signature, addressed to you and the council, would you vote it down?
I think we've said that from the start, if there was an entity such as that that came forward like that, that'd be great, so, thank you.
Thank you kindly.
Yep, thank you, Mr. Bucelair. Mr. Dilly? Well, it's at comment period, so we try to take questions as you have, and we can get back to you.
Okay, well, thank you for following up on the precedent, past precedent, moving that back to planning and zoning, I appreciate that. My question is from, and regarding a lot of the property owners in Felkner, if the Fu Fang project falls through, do the special assessments change for the Felkner Township property owners?
I think that's a good question, I think, Mr. Fionn, if you got, I know you don't probably have the full answer there, but I know there's certain items that they're paying for that would have to probably be rethought, is that a fair assessment?
It is. We talked, and this will be a discussion at planning and zoning, as mayor, as you indicated, I think on the drinking water side, on the, on the collection, sanitary sewer collection side, I think we'd go forward as, whether Fu Fang is there or not. The storm pond might be smaller, but again, we're not going to assess that at this point in time, the flood specials are going to be what they are, and what we've heard is 27th Avenue North needs to be done regarding that. I would say the only thing, we may redesign what the wastewater pump station is, right now, we're looking at a 3 million gallon per day plus wastewater pump station, so we may modify the design of that to serve the adjacent property owners and do some different things, but I think the bottom line is, right now, what we're proposing is to serve the adjacent area to provide some capacity in the Greenfield site for an industrial facility, but we do intend to serve it, to Mr. Dilly's question, with or without Fu Fang. But again, that would be a final of city council decision.
Thank you, Mr. Fionn, thank you, Mr. Dilly, Mr. Cadillac? Ms. Graduleski, please.
Good evening, everyone, thank you for having me. Seems like a lot of new law discoveries happened recently, I find that kind of interesting. My name is Cindy Graduleski, and for perspective, I have a bachelor's in political science, a master's in public administration, and a doctorate in strategic leadership. I'm also a major in the United States Air Force, and I'd like to start, I'm going to talk about the petition piece of it, which I know Mr. Gostad mentioned his piece on. I'd like to start by providing an abbreviated evolution of Grand Forks petition efforts. So, we have in 2006, there's a petition for renewable energy measure that are completed on the wrong form. The then-city attorney used his expertise to help the citizens by rewriting the document to produce a measure for the council to decide. Per the meeting notes, council president Gersham stated that this is not an endorsement, but recognizing that thousands of citizens wanted to put it on the ballot, and that is what we are doing, and the council agreed to put the measure to a vote. In 2016, which I realize was brought up, the Arbor Park petition, regardless of what type of petition it was, the city auditor is used to validate the signatures, and even with the time taken to make up for the invalid signatures, which allegedly they were allotted because of the type of petition, the whole process takes about two weeks. Fast forward to 2022, our petition, the Fu Fang petition, the current city attorney takes a different approach, as circulators and signers are being investigated by the Grand Forks Police Department, specifically a police detective, despite the admission by the now-city attorney that it might be unnecessarily intimidating. The mayor pushes forward with no known opposition, and unlike President Gersham's approach, President Sandy stated that he would have utilized the Bureau of Criminal Investigation, which I'm aware was used at the state level after suspicion of fraud. So, instead of lifting the voices of 5,300 people who willingly signed our petition, some who are family members of the opposing people sitting up here, you decide to take or state that you are going to take the allotted 20 days in full as an opportunity for what appears to be a witch hunt to invalidate the entire process on technicalities, all while attempting to convince the citizens it's business as usual. And I realize that some of the statements made were that your goal is to do that in less than 20 days, but given the history, it seems a little bit difficult to believe, it almost feels like we're setting the stage for something different, but I will wait and see that. Integrity. Many people define integrity as doing the right thing when nobody's looking. What I like to emphasize is it's also doing the right thing when someone is looking. What I mean by that is when you feel pressured by influential people to act inconsistently with values. Do not get that confused with semantics or legality, because those are not synonymous with character. Just because you can doesn't mean you should. Finally, Mr. Mayor, you do not get to deflect, you do not get to deflect responsibility to the city attorney as I know you have. Likewise, Mr. Gostad, you do not get to accept full responsibility for these decisions. Yes, as a leader, we should absolutely seek counsel for those who compensate for the gaps in our competence, but you do not get the luxury of pleading ignorance. What I witnessed specifically from the mayor and President Sandy is listening to respond instead of seeking to understand. There's no listening with compassion. Instead, you portray a picture to the public of being transparent and willing to answer questions, with no real desire to understand the perspective of those impacted by your decisions. All this followed by a lack of accountability and political gaslighting of your constituents, dismissing the very intelligent and invested people who care greatly for this city. As an elected leader, one that I voted for, you have a responsibility to put the people first, keep your ego in check, and have the courage to change course when things are going in the wrong direction, even if it marries your political reputation. Rick Warren once said, "Having authority implies accountability. If you reject blame for failures, under your watch, people reject your leadership." You have an opportunity here to demonstrate not only respect for the democratic process, but for the people of Grand Forks by halting this project until the people get the vote they deserve. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Graduleski. Mr. Cadillac, we called you earlier, but you weren't here, so welcome back up.
Well, as well as you proceeded, okay?
I agree on that.
Very nicely said some of the things I wanted to say, because I don't have the eloquence like that, and I want to tell you people, if the shoe fits, wear it. I was brought up in a household where I was told, "You earn respect," so if the shoe fits, wear it. 5,300 signatures in such a short time, we this people have spoken, not you guys, it's them guys. You know, the U.S. Constitution is a piece of paper that you guys think is toilet paper. You pledged allegiance to that plague today, but were you considering what that means? You're pledging allegiance to the Constitution that that plague stands for, and there is a little article in that paper that talks about "we, the people." And you know, it's very nice that we are talking about a $700 million project now, because that isn't how this thing started out. How this started out, I came up here and spoke, and the mayor wasn't here that day, but I said, "Are we going to be honest and above board with this?" And Mr. Sandy addressed me and said, "Mr. Cadillac, there's nothing I could say or do to make you happy." And I assured him there was, he could resign. And you know, the saying goes for the rest of it, "If the shoe fits, wear it." You know, you were elected by "we, the people," not "you, the people," "we, the people." And we did it very nicely, we gave you 5,300 signatures and asked you very nicely, "Let's add, like that lady says, a democratic way." And you know, if you don't like this country, I would suggest leave it. Until this country changes its way, the democratic way is still the way it's to be done in this country. And you know, the first thing I said about this project is, it's communist, you know? And it is not the Chinese people. I asked you, last time I was up here, what does Fu Fang mean? Can anybody tell me? I'm asking a question, can any one of you people tell me what Fu Fang means? You look like deer in headlights, I'm asking a question, could I please get an answer?
Mr. Cadillac, it's the name of the company.
Yes, but it means something. It means something. The name Fu Fang means something. It's like, I have this friend of mine, she's been a friend for 20 years since she moved here from China, me and her are best friends. I don't address her by her Chinese name, I address her by the name that the Chinese name means, Sunshine. And Sunshine has told me what the name of the company means. You guys are pushing a $700 million project, and you do not know what the name of that company means. Think about it, if you can do that, think about it.
Thank you, Mr. Cadillac. Mr. Graduleski.
Good evening, thanks for having me up here. Most of my points have already been made, I guess, I would like to kind of reiterate what Jeanie said, there has to be some aspect of this project that can be put to a vote. How about the annexation portion of it? You can run it through the Planning and Zoning Committee, and when it comes back to you, is there a way that we could all have a say on that? Because as it's been said many times, 5,300 signatures, that was 93% of the population that put you in office, Mr. Mayor. I just, I think what is lost right now with this petitioning is, it's kind of viewed as an inconvenience to the city council, when it should be viewed as us helping you guys properly do your job. The city has spoken and said that we don't like what's going on, let's work together and try and figure it out. So, I'm going to ask you guys to try and figure out how to put this to a vote in some way, shape, or form. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Graduleski. Lonnie Leek? Mr. Leek, no. Another, Todd Leek? All right, thank you. Dr. Barber, Dr. Elizabeth Barber. Mr. Coachman, yours to close, sir. It was nice to see you out in Bismarck over the weekend, sir.
It was good seeing you too, it was really busy out there, it was really good, a lot of people. It was good seeing you at the city council, I just had a few questions, I'm dealing with the security thing that you had last week, but one of the questions I have before I get onto this, is my understanding that the Grand Forks Police Department is helping with the, searching out the petitions, the names on the petition?
That's not accurate, they're assisting in getting information that I've requested them to gather.
So, the Grand Forks Police Department is assisting you on information for people on the petition?
With respect to matters in gathering the signatures, yes. I think the list of questions have been shared.
So, is it a criminal investigation?
It is not.
And you're using them for researching information on a petition? So, has this ever been done before? Because I know, I've been participating with a lot of petitions throughout the state and known other people, but I never had law enforcement involved unless there was a criminal act. That's what I'm asking, is there a criminal act where you have to use law enforcement?
I don't know what other people have done across the state, I've requested the assistance to gather some information for me.
Okay, is this the first time you've ever done it on a petition?
It is for me.
Oh, okay, that sums it up, it's for that. Going back to this national outreach security that you were talking last week, you said the Grand Forks referred to the OSI a few months ago, how did you know that?
Mr. Coachman, I was told by the Grand Forks Air Force Base officials.
Oh, so did you go to them, or they came to you?
They provided a response to me.
Okay. Here, another question I have, you have the National Security Think Tank review, who is consistent of the think tank? Who's the think tank?
Mr. Coachman, we spoke with, specifically with Matt Pottinger.
Who is?
He's the former deputy national security official, and is currently, works in a think tank and also with a national consultant.
You said former?
He's the former national security officer.
So, you never talked to the national security officer?
No, we followed up with him on the advice of Senator Kramer.
Oh. So, you never went to like Homeland Security, National Security, none of those agencies directly?
Mr. Coachman, do you have comments tonight, please?
No, I was just asking clarification on this, that's...
Okay, this is a public comment here, this is a public comment here, please, focus the comments.
Yes, that's what I was just clarifying.
Thank you.
So, who, on this here, you have Fu Fang U.S. is not on a White House National Security prohibit list of Chinese companies from June, is this from June 2021? Is there an updated list, or did you check to see there was updated list?
Mr. Coachman, my understanding is that's the last time the list has been provided, so that's the most updated list.
But you haven't contacted them recently? The White House, where in the White House did you get this list?
Mr. Mayor, this feels like an interrogation.
We're not on trial here, this is ridiculous.
Mr. Coachman, you've got comments, if you'd like to stick to comments, please, stick to comments here.
Excuse me, this is what he put out on a PowerPoint last week, and I'm just asking for clarification.
You're welcome to send an email and ask all the questions you want, we'll deal with any question you want to ask.
All righty then.
Any further comments, Mr. Coachman?
So, my question is, why can't you answer that? If you did this, if you put this in a PowerPoint presentation and bring it here, you should be to answer the question, that's all I'm asking.
The answer is Fu Fang is not on a White House list that is restricted to do business. Number two, agribusness is not a economic sector that's right now on a not to do business with.
Okay, and my other question is, where in the White House did you check the list?
On the White House website.
Website, so you never checked it.
Any further comments, Mr. Coachman?
No, I'm good, you said it all, thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right. Moving on to approval of minutes and bills?
7.1 is the vendor list and engineer's estimate as is presented.
We got a motion to approve the vendor list and engineer estimate, motion from Mr. Cavani, seconded by Mr. Reigel, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion is approved. Number eight, citizen administrator comments.
Mayor Woschinsky, you mentioned Becky Alt, I just wanted to, she's left for the evening, but, and on a positive note, that Ms. Alt is going to retire. but, and on a positive note, that Ms. Alt is going to retire, I think as of the end of June, and so after 34 years of public service, 28 in, in public safety, and 12 years as the Public Safety Answering Point Director, she's going to retire, so she's going to be missed so very much from, throughout the city of Grand Forks, so it's just one more person that's doing great things for the city of Grand Forks. So she'll be here for a little bit longer, and so let's cherish all the days that we have with her, that's all.
Thank you, on to mayor and councilmember comments, Mr. Weigl, any comments this evening?
It's been fun, but no thank you, Mayor.
All right, Ms. Dockler?
No.
Mr. Weber?
No, thanks.
Mr. Cavani?
No, thanks.
Vice President, sorry, Mr. Bean. All right, Vice President Mock?
Just a reminder that signatures to run for office are also due April 11th.
All right, President Sandy, any comments?
Thank you, Mayor, no, happy birthday, sir.
Oh, thank you, I appreciate that. I will say, first 40 years have been interesting, I'm looking forward to hopefully making another 40 years, these last couple of months have probably taken a few years off the end of that, but, you know, these people up here are good people, the staff is good people, we're working hard to move the city of Grand Forks forward, it's not easy, you know, it's tough to come up here and have to, you know, basically be called numerous names and be treated as if you've got different interests, but at the end of the day, I just want to thank council, I want to thank city staff for the effort that's gone into this, because without you, the city isn't what it is today, so I thank you for that, and I'd look for a motion to adjourn. Got a motion from Mr. Weber, or Mr. Weigl, and a second from Mr. Weber, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
They're adjourned.
Happy birthday.